I can't hear.
Same. Oh, perfect.
Okay.
Foundation presented in person and Charter One presented online as well by Zoom. All had the option to do Zoom or in person. So it was a unanimous recommendation from the committee to go with Friendship Education Foundation. When I go back and look at the three that participated in the interviews, a little bit about those three, just so you know, background. Grassroots Arkansas is a group that's really based on advocacy. In the interviews, that was one of the things that when they were discussing as a committee afterwards, they, the committee felt like they didn't have the experience for the day-to-day operation. I think they themselves in their interviews indicated that, but the committee did feel like this could be a potential partnership for working together in the community to improve, to improve education within the community, creating stronger CTE bathroom pathways, partnerships. So that was, that was kind of the conversation around that one. Friendship Education Foundation, that was the recommendation. I'll go into some key points of why in a minute. Charter One was a charter management organization that was outside the state and does not currently have any existing schools within the state. And the committee felt very strongly that they didn't know enough about, one, the school of the community or Arkansas in general to be able to set up, especially in the timeline that was needed. The reason why the committee went with the unanimous recommendation for friendship was one that they were already in-state and had schools set up. They came with a plan. They shared their plan. They were, they had a coherent plan. They actually came with a presentation that we did not allow them to present because we kept everybody to the same format. They've been proactive, almost to a point where people have said, oh, it's already a planned deal, where it has not been. In fact, if anything, we've had to say that there's, there's not a, there's not a contract and we're not giving access to teachers. This is, you know, you can, you can advertise, you can promote, you can get ready to recruit, but they've been very proactive and the committee saw that as a plus, that, that they showed that they wanted to be there. They had identified curriculum already in use within their current schools in Arkansas that is aligned to the science of reading. They have a very robust professional development throughout their organization. They emphasized during the interviews on climate and culture and building relationships. They had a plan on community engagement and had folks within the organization to promote community engagement. And they also had a very individualized plan for being student-focused. So, once that recommendation was made, these are the things in law that the entity must have. One, they have to be determined to be in good standing. The Friendship Education Foundation is in good standing with, in their charter, and the charter schools that's connected to them are in good standing. The charter's not previously been revoked. The three years preceding the school districts, they have an overall rating of C or higher, and they had no significant findings on the prior year annual financial audits, and all those were found to be true. So, after they were recommended, after we'd conducted interviews, that brings us to April 24th through the 3rd. There's been negotiation for contract going on these two weeks. Even as late as yesterday, there were still specific things being negotiated. I was eager to be able to get this done in a week, and I think I was naive in my thinking that we could have all this done in a week and negotiated and we would be right back here to tell you what it was. Got attorneys involved. It took a little longer, but they negotiated a contract for two weeks. Some of the components in that contract, these were kind of the high areas, definition of terms, performance and service delivery, foundations and the district's responsibility, student admissions and standards, policies and other obligations, financial arrangements, personnel and training, and then just some of the facilities, the warranties, some of, some of those other pieces. I wanted to lift up for you some specific themes that were in the contract negotiation. One was considering a transition term that would begin immediately, once the, the contract is approved. So getting into the school as soon as next week to be able to start doing an analysis of needs. A three-year contract, which we talked about at the last board meeting, that that's what we thought we would go to. Clearly identifying what they would oversee and manage, which is the day-to-day operations. They would use the Friendship School design. They would provide the professional development. You can see some of the other key points in there, performance measures, reporting. So those were some of the things that were negotiated throughout the contract negotiation. I will say that this is the Marvel Elaine School District that is going into a contract with a third party. This is not Marvel Elaine School District becoming a charter school or a charter district. The Marvel Elaine School District is maintained. The school facilities, property, land still belongs to the community of the Marvel Elaine School District. The organization is going to operate the day-to-day facilities. Okay? They can't sell a building. They can't sell land. They can't do any of that on their own. Okay? Contracts, large contracts, they still have to get a normal approval. Okay? So they are still a public school district. And when I go back to the April 13th meeting, if you were in Marvel at that meeting, which all of you were, the Marvel Elaine community overall was ecstatic. They were pleased that their school district was not closing and that there was an option for them to be able to maintain. Things have been talked about, the sports teams, they will stay. The, the, this organization entity came in with the plan of, we're, we're going to keep trying to maintain, but our priority is to improve academics for students, and that's what everybody wants. So the recommendation today is to this board then, and let me kind of tell you about what your role is. The law requires the state board to approve a school district to enter into a transformation contract. At last month, you didn't actually approve a transformation contract. You directed the commissioner to begin looking into one. Okay? Had last month, you said, we turn it over to the commissioner and we approve, we wouldn't be, because you're not here today to approve the actual contract. You're here to determine that the district could go into a contract with a third party. So the law requires the contract to be a governing body of an opener charter school or another entity approved by the state board. Contract negotiations occurred between the local district and the organization, which at this time, the local school board is the secretary. So the recommendation today is to approve the Marvel Elaine School District Board to enter into a transformation contract with Friendship Education Foundation. The school, I want to say this one more time, the school district is not going to be called Friendship School District. The school district remains Marvel Elaine Public School District. So that is our recommendation.
Would you like to?
Okay. Let's see if any board members have, have any questions. Ms. Hunter? Dr. Hill? Let's see if we have any online. Mr. Sutton, you're online. Do you have any questions? He may not can hear me. He's on mute.
Now, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Okay. I may have missed this on the front end, Stacy, but were these three companies the finalist?
They were.
As chosen from a larger pool?
No, sir. These were the only three that submitted. And we, we recognized in April that we would probably, I, I believe when I presented to you in April, I told you I was surprised that I had two proposals that came organically, like people coming forward saying, we want to do something, we want to help, recognizing that the district was in critical need.
Right. Okay. So you weren't surprised that there were only three?
No. I, I, actually, I was, I was thankful that there was, there was more than one.
Yeah.
I was, I was, I was pleased to see that we attracted a provider that was not even in our state, that gave us something else to think about. I was pleased to see that we had in-state folks. I was pleased to see an advocacy group stepping up. I was pleased previously to see the co-ops looking for. I think the transformation contract is going to allow us to think differently about how we can do school improvement and not have to take over districts. And so what we really want to see is, we want to see this happening earlier, that people are going into contracts to manage and assist so that we have better opportunities instead of getting to the point where it's critical, which is what's happened right now at this district. It is a critical situation in which we are not serving students well at all.
Yeah. I, I fully understand and agree with that. Let me ask you this. Did your interviews with the other two companies give you any information to compare the cost of, since we haven't done this before?
We, we did not, yeah.
Yeah. How do you know that these, these payments are?
Yeah, I'd be happy. Yeah, let me go into that a little bit deeper. So we didn't, in, in none of the interviews, we talked about cost a little bit, but in none of them did we go deep into how that was going to be calculated. I can tell you, in the cost of this contract, the $200,000 covers the cost of the superintendent. It covers the cost of the folks for facilities. It's almost a cost neutral and maybe even in fact, saving the district money because the foundation themselves will be actually organizing and running things that normally the daily operations of the school district would do.
Okay. Okay. Good.
So you are correct, though, that it's a new scenario and there were many late-night, very long, lengthy discussions between legal and our finance about what makes sense.
Well, good job getting it to this point.
All right. Ms. Rollins, do you have questions? And by the way, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Can we talk a little bit about the history of success in the Friendship Education Foundation? I know you've studied them in depth, but I have not. Can you just talk to us a little bit about the credentials, what, what kind of staff they're going to bring in to the district?
So those were, yeah, I, I'll touch on those, and those were covered pretty, pretty in-depth during the And those were covered pretty in-depth during the interview process by the committee who made the recommendation. They do meet the qualifications set forth in law of having a C or better over their average. They have been in good standing within the state. Friendship themselves has an actual established model. We have had folks from our department who have done school site visits. In fact, Secretary Aliva has done a site visit. They've met standards for accreditation. And so they have performed well as far as providing services. I will say, within their plan for going into this region, they seem to have indicated to me that they're aware that they're going to have to really be aggressive on recruiting and retention. They're thinking about some outside-of-the-box things about doing literally carpooling or transportation coming from central Arkansas moving to the area. They're talking about trying to maybe possibly do some teacher housing, revamping some of the existing buildings that are there within the community that the district owns to provide some temporary housing during the week. So those are some of the elements that came forth during the interview.
Okay. So have they worked with students in poverty?
Yes. Their current schools that they have right now, one is in Pine Bluff.
Okay, okay. And then I know it's a three-year contract. Have they kind of talked about their goals?
So there is a, in the contract, we will establish performance measurements and metrics together. Obviously, the metrics and measurements pertaining to around growth particularly and students doing, improving, especially on the state test. But we've also talked about maintaining enrollment or attracting teachers, increasing the number of teachers at the school district that are certified. So there are multiple metrics that will be put in. We both agreed, because of how quickly this was be done, that during this transition phase, which is this first two months, that's when we would work together to establish some of those metrics each year, which they will give, they will still have the responsibility of quarterly reports, reporting back to this board because it's still classified as a Level 5 district. So we'll be reporting on the progress that they're making.
Okay, good. And then will they have exit strategies as well?
So at this point with this contract, this is about, this isn't about, you're talking about an exit strategy from Level 5, that stays with the district, yes. Which could then result in the district going back to their own local control. As far as the charter goes, or charter of the organization, Friendship Education Foundation, as far as that organization goes, their contract is to run the day-to-day operations of the district.
Okay. So that, will the secretary then still keep control of when the district is turned back to the local board? Who makes the decision?
That's this board's decision.
Okay, okay. So we haven't lost that. And then how about building capacity for staff? I mean, that's extremely important. Does Friendship Education Foundation have good experience with that?
So their foundation does provide, they have a, within the interviews, they shared their models for professional development and support, how they train principal leadership. So their foundation is actually fairly expansive, from retention recruitment to professional development to curriculum development, to literacy and math support, to facilities. So the foundation itself has mechanisms for running the day-to-day operations of a school and have shown that within the schools that they have opened in the state.
Okay. And then, Ms. Smith, will you still be involved? Will you still be going down there and helping with all of this? Or is it kind of a hands-off with the department?
No, this is a partnership. And that's what I, that's what I want everybody to get. We've got to work together on this. We've got kids getting hurt because we're not providing them a decent education. So whether it's the advocacy groups, whether it's the public school, whether it's the foundation, whether it's the department, we've got to roll our sleeves up and we've got to all work for the betterment of the students in the school. And we've got to do better than what's currently happening and we cannot wait. And so as far as our involvement, you bet we're going to be involved. But I hope that Friendship Education Foundation doesn't see us as this, you know, anytime we have a district that's in Level 5, we want to be a partner to improve education. And we want them to see us as that partner. When we think they need to improve, we're going to be there to talk to them about that. When they need support, I hope they're going to reach out and ask us.
Okay. And then, so the co-op will still be a big partner in all of this?
Yes, the Marvel Elaine School District is part of that regional co-op.
Okay, okay. All right, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good questions.
Ms. Wood?
The only question I have that I was unclear on, who, is it the state that is assisting and paying for this contract or Marvel Elaine is funding this contract?
Yeah, the Marvel Elaine School District is funding the contract.
And we are confident in their ability to see the contract through?
Yes.
Okay. That was the question I had.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. So one question I have is with regard to incentives that are required under Arkansas Learns. How does this require Friendship to pay those various incentives for, you know, success?
Yeah, so on, so for example, the minimum requirement for teacher salary. The Marvel Elaine Public School District is accepting the funding and raising their teacher salaries to $50,000. Friendship Education Foundation, they're going to help manage that. It's going to be their responsibility to see that. As far as the incentives that are outlined in Learns, those are something that rules here at the department are being designed for that. And they'll conduct those incentives just like any other school district in the state.
Okay, so when it comes to, you know, superintendent accountability, and I don't know if, I don't know off the top of my head if Learns goes deeper than that with regard to principal accountability, but anyway, administrator accountability and incentives would be, Friendship would have to follow whatever guidelines eventually come out from this board.
State law requires performance metrics for superintendent contracts, okay? There's going to be performance metrics as part of this contract period that the Education Foundation will be overseeing. Okay? And so the responsibility for them is to meet those metrics.
Okay. A little bit related to a previous question, but explain just a little bit why three years? Given that we've never done this before...
Well, that was...
Is three years the best option or should we do something a little shorter to figure this out?
So, the length of time was something that was discussed multiple times. Should it be longer? Should it be shorter? You know, what's the right amount? Three years was determined for a couple of reasons. One, enough time to actually create change, to get pieces in place, in practice, and create a transformative change. I will tell you that in three years, we're not going to walk through this school and see an A school. It's going to take time to do deep transformative change, but within three years, we should be able to see some substantive change, especially from what's occurring right now. So three years was kind of like, this is at least a long enough runway to be able to see some substantial change occurring within the district. The reason why it wasn't longer than three years was, one, Level 5 classification is only for five years and we felt like we needed to have a time and place where we need to be able to really analyze and assess what's happening. Also to keep this board on track for any decisions that you have to make or recommendations that you want to make pertaining to the progress of the district.
And has there been discussion with Friendship about specific literacy strategies and maybe their analysis of why some of their campuses have better success than others?
So that was one of the things discussed in the interviews, an in-depth discussion really around their curriculum that they're using, the professional development support, training of teachers. I did not get into specifics as far as an individual building and individual scores with classrooms or teachers, but that's definitely a specific performance metric that will be part of this contract and expectations around literacy.
Okay.
They do, they did demonstrate that they had alignment to the science of reading. They did demonstrate that the quality instructional materials, high-quality instructional materials that they use are on our approved list. They did show that they were having success in training in the science of reading. So as far as the things, those foundational pieces we were looking for, they checked the box on those.
Okay. Hunter, do I understand it correctly that their Little Rock campus is not the highest performing of their campuses?
I would have to go and look at that right now. I could ask someone to do that.
Well, that's okay. I just, assuming that someone is there in the room, I just, I hope they understand that that is, for this board member, that is among the highest priorities. And I would love to see a self-analysis from them as to what is working and what they've identified that is not working as they prepare to go into this. I know that, I know that even their Little Rock campus probably outperforms what's currently happening at Marvel Elaine, but nonetheless, I hope the bar is high and not low.
Yeah, and we expect it to be a high bar as well. And, you know, as part of a needs assessment, especially using like, utilizing federal funds or school improvement plans, you should be identifying the areas of needs within your school and tailoring the plan to that. And that is part of the goal as we move forward with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Song?
Not so much the question about like an exit plan, but considering the end of that three years, is there a plan in place for, you know, at two and a half years in, for when we are going to assess what the next steps are? Or do we wait until the end of the three-year contract to then determine what's going to happen next?
I think as we're doing those quarterly reports to the state board, I mean, that means you're going to get four reports. So by the time you get, we get there, you're talking about eight reports. Those are questions you as a board should be asking us each time. How are we moving towards our metrics? What are the things we're thinking about? What does this look like next?
Any other questions from board members?
I just have, I have one, Ms. Smith. I know that most schools, the next week or two weeks, school is going to be out. And to be able to reach community and teachers and students, if you're going to really get the word out now is the time to do it. And I know that Friendship is going, if this is approved, would be in the school. So I guess, you know, I would like to hear a little bit more about this transition plan, especially for the next couple of weeks while school is still in session, how they are going to involve students, parents, community, to really inform them about what maybe the next steps forward might be.
So, and we can bring up Mr. Harris or Dr. Harris in just a second from Friendship to kind of hit on some of those points. But I will tell you, as part of our conversations in the contract negotiation, it was really about the opportunity for them to have access. You know, they have done some community meetings, they have done some just informal walkthroughs at the school, but that was something that they arranged. Once we started in a negotiation and this process took place, we pretty much stopped because there were multiple, you had more than one putting in. So at this point, they need to be allowed to get in, one, and determine, staff that's currently there are going to interview, which staff are, you know, are they going to offer positions to current staff? They need to be able to get in there and get their hands on their student data, be able to make decisions about schedules and classes for next school year. You know, just facilities themselves, is there things that they need to get set up to do this summer? So a lot of it's going to be that very quick assessment part and a very, this is where they've really, I think, been stressing, they need to do retention recruitment, recruitment efforts for staff. They have been proactive in that and they can tell you themselves that they have like 30-something applicants on certain areas, just from their own proactive going out and saying, "Hey, this is what we're doing." So, you know, while some of that maybe has splashed up on us, like there's already a done deal, which there was not, I say that over and over again, it's been this proactive piece on their part that they now have a list of candidates that they can actually look at and actually interview.
I just know to involve the community, it's much easier to involve the community, parents, students, when school is in session than in the summer. And then, you know, if there are any plans to already maybe to start filling in some gaps this summer with the student learning, you know, if they had any plans toward that.
They do not have, Friendship did not have an immediate plan for doing like a summer school at this moment. There's a lot to do to get ready for school starting next year. So what we're doing this summer are any kind of conversations with Dr. Ray.
And maybe some professional development for teachers?
Absolutely, for those that will be staying.
Okay.
And, you know, I want to say that the timeline in this isn't perfect, but where were we a month ago? The school was closing. So there has been a lot of work done in a very short amount of time, one, to stand this building, the school district back up, try to find a partner to come in. And again, I'm pleased that we had more than one person saying, "I want to try." But the thing that has to happen is we have to do better by the kids in that building. If we walk through the schools next year and it looks the exact same as it looks this year, that can't happen. So we have to do better. And so we want to give Friendship the opportunity to set up for a system where they're beginning school at the beginning of next school year and hopefully be set up for some success. But getting into the building as quickly as possible and beginning to do some quick assessments, especially around staffing and student needs, is what's the main focus of the transition.
You know, just living through the era of consolidation and communities losing schools, I know how hard it is for the community, but I think we heard in last month's meeting that the community was there, they, I think, had their eyes open to the needs that were there in the community and they were willing to come alongside and were grateful for the chance to do what was right for their kids and their community. So I know change is hard sometimes, but I hope that this will be something that we will look back on and think about, that we did what was right for kids. And that's what, that's what our whole focus has been ever since we started on this board, what is right for kids. And so, this is different, but this is what's right for kids.
All right. Any other comments from any board members? Dr. Hill?
I would just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Mr. Sutton?
I just wanted to congratulate the entire department for moving so quickly in getting us to this point. Not on your daily duties, I'm sure, so you've had to drop what you're doing and get this to this point. And I really appreciate it. I'm sure the city of Marvel and Elaine appreciate it. So congratulations.
Yes. You know, Mr. Sutton, thank you for saying that. And here's what I wish. I wish that I could walk out of here today and say, "Everybody supports this. This is the best thing." And, you know, we're not all going to support it, we're not all going to be on the same page. But if this is the recommendation and the action that the board supports today, I hope that people will support for students and that we can all get on, somehow figure out how to work together, because this is an opportunity for that school to stay open and to do better. So thank you for that. And, you know, there are things that, I mean, I wish this was done in a week and that people could have been notified faster, but if we would have done it within a week instead of two weeks, would have been too fast. And then two weeks is too fast, but too slow. It's a hard balance. So thank you for saying that, yes.
Sure.
Ms. Smith, can you just remind me, what is the cost of the contract? I want to make sure I understood the cost.
There was a $50,000 transition payment piece and then there was a $200,000 yearly piece.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We have, I think we have public comment.
Yes, you do.
So we'll need a motion from the board to accept public comment?
So moved.
Okay. We had a motion by Mr. Sutton, seconded by Dr. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will limit public comment to three minutes. Secretary, are you going to time for me? Okay. All right. Our first one is Ally Nolan.
Thank you, Secretary Aliva, members of the board. My name is Ally Nolan. I'm an Little Rock attorney and I'm here actually representing a group of Marvel residents who have organized as the concerned citizens of the Marvel area and also the mayor of the city of... the city of Elaine, the Honorable Lisa Hicks Gilbert, in her individual capacity as a resident of Elaine. My clients are very frustrated. I emailed you all earlier today. I laid out their frustrations with not being part of this process, not being able to see this contract that you all are voting on. I will remind you, you cannot vote on a secret document. There needs to be public release of this information, but I'm really here to advise you, as an attorney, that you do not have the legal authority to take the vote that you're about to take. The Learns Act is the law that would create the authority to create transformation contracts. It includes an emergency clause. That emergency clause is defective. It was not passed with a separate two-thirds majority vote after the passage of the law, as is required in Article, let's see, Article 5, Section 1, I believe, of the Arkansas Constitution. It is defective. That means the law is not in effect yet. You do not have the authority yet to take that step. Second, the language in the emergency clause does not lay out facts sufficient under Arkansas Supreme Court precedent to establish an emergency. In fact, we have Arkansas Supreme Court case law that says essentially, the law that is being passed cannot itself create the emergency that then justifies the emergency clause. The language in the Learns Act emergency clause, the part that contains a provision related to the transformation contracts, only lays out facts related to how the Learns Act needs to be implemented quickly. You have to do rulemaking, you have to get it into effect for next school year. It doesn't set out separate facts constituting an emergency. For those two reasons, it is not effective yet, and Learns is not yet the law in the state of Arkansas. If you move forward with this vote, my clients are prepared to file something immediately in court to stop you, because you do not have the authority to do this yet. Now, I will say, you have heard a lot of language about why this is urgent and why it is needed. My clients think it is urgent for the people of Marvel Elaine to be involved in shaping this contract, if a contract is going to be the path that you go, and you cannot, you are not able to retroactively establish an emergency that isn't what the General Assembly put in that law and voted on. So, any flowery language about the urgency is not gonna change the legal analysis about the fact that the emergency clause is not effective yet.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. Our next comment is from Ms. Whitfield.
Hello, my name is Dr. Anika T. Whitfield. I am chair, or co-chair of Grassroots Arkansas, and I'm here on behalf of Marvel Elaine community members. I've personally gone to Elaine and sat with parents and community members in Elaine. I've personally gone and sat with community members in Marvel, and it is breaking my heart to hear that we're at a point where the Arkansas State Board of Education is not asking the Arkansas Department of Elementary and Secondary Education why they have failed our children in Marvel and Elaine School District. I heard over and over again the deputy director saying that Marvel Elaine School District is not doing what it should be doing. Your question to her should be why? Because the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a responsibility for all of our children in the state of Arkansas, and so if there is any onus of failure, it's not on the Marvel Elaine School District community. The onus is on the people who are supposed to be making sure that they have every access to every tool that would be necessary for them to be successful. So, asking for a transformation contract, in fact, is an admission that they failed, but also a horrible, a horrible solution, and that is to monetize these children and to say that what is most important is to financially save money by giving a contract to a charter management organization, rather than saying, we're gonna do the right thing by these students. We're gonna actually show up in Marvel and Elaine as they asked you to. They asked you to take a bus ride from Elaine to Marvel and see what it's like for the kids coming from Snow Lake to Elaine every morning, going about 40 minutes to school every morning, and then 40 minutes back home every afternoon. They asked you to come and sit and talk with the parents and learn what kind of programs that the Arkansas Department of Elementary and Secondary Education helped to ensure that their school district had, programs that were volunteer programs, programs that were community programs, programs that had tutorial access for students in school while they were in classrooms. They asked you to make sure that there were meetings that were both in Marvel and Elaine so that there was representation. You keep saying that it's about the kids, but I see no evidence that it's about the kids. Why? Because these seats aren't filled with children. These seats aren't filled with their parents, because you all decided to have, or the Arkansas Department of Elementary and Secondary Education asked for, I guess, called for this special meeting on a Friday at 2:00 and made an announcement on Thursday, where parents who are suffering economically cannot drive two hours to get here to speak on behalf of themselves. The last time that we all met, you all were in Marvel Elaine at the high school. I sent a letter to the deputy director yesterday once I got the information and said, why not have the meeting in the community, so the community members could come and speak to how they feel about this? So, this is not about these children. Now, it might be about your children, it might be about the Waltons' children, but it's not about these children, and I'm just asking you to search your hearts and not, not go forward with this transformation contract.
Thank you. Our last comment that we have signed up is from Senator Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and board members. I just wanted to say a few things. One is, I assume when there is a presentation to be made, all of us have the best interest of kids at heart, and I really wish we would stop dividing that sentiment by beginning a conversation with or continuing to say, this is about the kids, when it's been presented from the perspective of the Department of Education, and if, and as if there is disagreement, other people don't share that sentiment. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because everybody in this room, I assume, has that sentiment, and time and again, when there is disagreement, it's as if we are doing this, because, for example, in this case, the people in Marvel Elaine don't feel as strongly as we do, or if anybody else like me who's not committed or living in the community won't feel the same way when we have these disagreements. I'm not here pretending I am speaking on behalf of Marvel Elaine School District. I attended meetings with them at the request of people from Marvel Elaine School District, so I don't want that to be misunderstood. And what they wanted to talk to me about was a school of innovation, a district of innovation, where it keeps the parents involved, it requires involvement from the community, and it lays out a way with the rules already established here at the Department of Education. It lays out a way the community people can come together and decide what kind of school they want to build. I sponsored that legislation in 2013 for things just like this. So, the community, the students, parents, and all the folks who need to make sure everybody, not just the Department of Education, but everybody, including legislators who need to do better in funding what we're doing and passing better policy, so that everybody can do something that they haven't done before. And one of the questions that was asked in the presentation was, what is it that you've done? How can you show us what you've done before, with questions that are absolutely impertinent to a school of innovation? Because so much of what's being asked about in that discussion was the things we have done over and over again. For example, I suggested we need to do a better job of having rubrics for determining what the legislature's in. That's one thing to measure. Let's measure the quality of life in the community. That's important, because we don't do that. We just expect everything to happen right at the school's site, and we have been shown time and time and time again, it has not worked.
Thank you, Senator.
And we're gonna do it again. Am I out of time? Is that hard?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's perfectly fine. I just wanna ask for you to think about why we have this language in legislation for situations such as these, if the community chooses to, rather than bringing somebody else in to do what the community could do if we had support, the full support from all of the legislature? Because if we don't do something about the quality of life and support economic development, we'll be steadily trying to build houses to get somebody to come there. That makes no sense. It's the whole package, and we're not doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Anyone else signed up, Courtney? Did we have anyone? Did you sign up for public? You had to sign up.
I didn't see what you-
Courtney, did you? Okay, sure. Come here. Can you, would you mind coming and signing, signing your name? So we can get out public record. You don't have to fill all that out. Just make sure you get your name. Thank you. Say your name for me.
Kwame.
Kwame, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, welcome.
Yeah, I'm gonna be short, because what I wanted to say has already been said, but there's two things that weren't said. My understanding that this is an administrative law proceeding as far as the transformational contract is concerned, and I just wanted to ask the question as far as the rulemaking to understand how this process works, because all this is happening so fast, and I'm just trying to figure out, well, how can the public look at something and say, okay, this is how a transformational, these are the steps that a transformational contract, that your responsibilities and everybody else's responsibilities? So, I just wanted to put that on the record, that I'm confused that there aren't any guardrails that the public can look at to make sure that everything is being done the way it's supposed to be done. And then the other thing that kind of struck me about the presentation is, I did not hear anything in the presentation that led me to believe that this transformational contract is going to make the Marvel Elaine School District better, because there's no resources that are, they're actually gonna be using the same exact resources that are currently there. So, if Marvel Elaine School District is in a hole, that they need an influx of resources to bring them out of that hole and then build them up, so that's something that I'm concerned about as well. So, I just wanted to make that part of the public record.
All right, thank you. Any board members have any other questions or comments? Ms. Smith, did you have anything that you need to add? You're good, okay. All right, so at this time, then, we are ready from, if there's no more discussion, ready for a motion?
Would you repeat what the motion needs to say?
You would approve that the commissioner would enter into the transformational contract with Friendship. You're not approving the contract, you would be directing the commissioner to enter into a contract, so we're not actually approving the contract itself. We are directing the commissioner to enter into a transformational contract with the Friendship Educational Foundation.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Sutton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wood. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none opposed, motion passes. Is there any other business that become before the board? Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Dr. Hill, seconded by Mr. Sutton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us today, we appreciate it.
Thank you.